We'll call the meeting to order. Invocation by Councilman Chris Smith and a pledge of allegiance by Councilman Ryan Hammond.
Let us pray, dear heavenly father, we thank you for this day, Lord, we pray that you will be with us in these council chambers. Lord, we pray for the citizens of Bossier City, Lord, you know every, every need, and we pray that you will just be with them. Lord, we thank you for the recovery of city attorney Charles Jacobs and that he is back with us. And we pray that you will be with us in this council chamber, Lord, as we conduct this business of the city of Bossier. In your name we pray, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
In accordance with Louisiana open meeting laws and the adopted Bossier City Council meeting rules resolution, the city council asks for ordering decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council or any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on a particular item that's up for discussion, with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal, impersonant, or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith by the president pro tem, board for, from further audience before the council, unless permission to be continued granted by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be addressed to a council or mayor except through the main chair. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. City council has appointed the city marshals as sergeant-at-arms and they have been instructed to maintain decorum. Ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
Do we have any ceremonial matters today? I guess not. Councilman, did a motion approve your day's agenda?
So moved, second.
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
It's not popping up.
Why don't you just do a verbal?
Okay.
All in favor, yea.
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 Any nays? No. Motion carries unanimous.
He has approved the amendments of the June 18th, 2024 regular city council meeting and dispense with reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the council? Questions, comments from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance appropriating $175,000 to come from jail and municipal building funds to make repairs and security upgrades to the Bossier City municipal complex. Final reading.
So moved, second.
Any questions from the council? Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote. Go back to it, can you go back to it? I think it sounds opposed on it. Now, so just, let's voice vote on this one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Did he show?
No.
Yeah.
They passed unanimously.
Adopted ordinance amending and reading enacting a portion of chapter six, section 10 of the code of ordinance related to alcohol beverages to allow the sale of packaged beverages of high and low alcoholic content to package wine for consumption of the premises on Sunday during designated hours and otherwise providing respect there too. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the council? Any questions or comments from the audience? Council, please cast your vote. All right, council, let's do another voice vote. In favor, say aye.
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 No.
Ben, you're on hold.
Adopting ordinance amending ordinance number 133 of 2018 by changing the zoning classification of certain tract of land being .73 acres more or less from resident low, resident low density to business commercial office located at 2654 O. Mendon Road, Bossier City, Louisiana, for a purpose of office and neighborhood business. First and final reading.
Make the motion, we continue this to the next meeting.
I'll second July.
Is that the 16th? July 16th?
Second.
Council, any questions?
The audience.
We got some more to go over here. Your way, vote.
Need feedback from the audience, I don't want to continue.
Any questions, comments from the council? Any questions, comments from the, from the audience? Council, please vote. Three, four, there you go. No, one more.
Chris, not Chris, but.
Mr. Hammond.
Brian.
We, it doesn't say to continue it, we're voting on the actual new business, aren't we?
No, we made the motion to continue.
No, I made the motion so that it should supersede what you're reading.
There you go.
Motion carries. Well, motion continued. Adopting ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to replace an 18-inch gravity sewer main segment on the corner of Sunflower Boulevard and Highway 71, cost of $122,505.44 to come from sewer capital in contingency fund. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Council, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Rashbak, is this the first one or the second one?
This is the first repair.
The first repair, okay.
Any other questions?
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance amending number 70 of 2024 by correcting certain type of graphical errors in the body of ordinance to reflect the new correct zoning classification. Limited business, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Council, any questions? Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Bossier and Louisiana Department of Children and Family Services to shelter residents to the Brookshire Grocery Arena. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor, when is this for?
This is for when, you know, disaster happens and people can get transferred their man.
Good afternoon. This is for critical transportation needs shelter for residents in three parishes, Cameron, Calcasieu, and Jefferson. If they, if there's a declared emergency and they do not have transportation of their own, then the state will provide the transportation and bring them to the arena. But it would only be those three parishes that we would service.
Don't we have one for the three parishes down south too, in case of emergencies?
This is a renewal of that, it's actually, the parish is changed, but this is, that one expires this year. And so this is to continue that. And this is just at the arena. We do have the special needs shelter at the civic center.
Any questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Mr. Free.
Ah, we missed him, somebody.
Come on. Come on this way. I mean, yes.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to amend the 2024 general fund budget to increase fire department vehicle repair and maintenance expense by $100,000. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Council, any questions?
I think Chief Zagall was wanting to explain.
Yeah, come on up here, Brad.
Thank you, council. And what happened is, we had one accident this year that ate up the majority of our budget to replace an ambulance, or repair an ambulance, not replace it. A little north of 60 grand. And so, we couldn't finish the rest of the year on that line item, not putting brakes and tires and doing maintenance on emergency vehicles. So, I didn't want that line item to run over.
I have a question. You're coming out of the general fund on this?
That's what the police did last year, so I just copied that same one.
Well, since it's an EMS vehicle, I mean, just to protect the general fund, could we go to the EMS capitals? That money that we have?
Perfect.
I'd like to make the recommendation that we change the funding mechanism for these, for this maintenance and repair.
I withdraw my motion and then second, Mr. Montgomery.
Council, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing and approving the engagement of N and N average rebate services to provide professional rebate services to the city of Bossier. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, council?
Well, since this is the.
Maybe the first and second reading.
I wanted Ms. Nottingham to give us a brief. Is that the one? Is this number seven?
Six.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about number seven.
Are they arbitrage?
No, I was talking about number seven.
Okay.
I apologize.
All right. Council, any questions? Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached agreement between the city of Bossier and Louisiana Department of Transportation Development related to the Jimmy Davis Bridge State Project, H. 001778, federal aid project. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ma'am, Mr. President, would like for Ms. Nottingham to just give a brief regarding this item.
There are three separate agreements. There's the entity-state agreement, the lighting and the sidewalk. These are all related exclusively to the construction of the new four-lane bridge and the improvements that will be made along the Jimmy Davis Highway and the Parkway. And so, where they, they're doing the cloverleaf, the tie-ins. And so, I provided copies of the pages in the agreement for you that show that DOTD is responsible for 100% of the cost for all of this construction for the bridge and the lighting and sidewalks. Once the construction is complete, the city will take maintenance of the sidewalks and lighting.
So that's on the Jimmy Davis Highway?
Correct.
Mr. President. So we, this agreement contrary to what was put out, we are not taking control over the linear park.
This has nothing.
This is the new bridge and everything that goes along with that, similar to what we do with other bridges.
Correct. There's been zero conversation at all related to the city taking ownership of the linear park. None at all.
It's just kind of confusing here when it says Louisiana Department of Transportation Development related to the Jimmy Davis Bridge.
Just the new construction, and it highlights that in the original agreement. So, in article one on the entity-state, it says the improvement here and after referred to as project that is to be undertaken under this agreement is to construct a four-lane bridge to the north of the existing bridge with full access interchanges to Arthur-Ateague Parkway and Claude Van Memorial Parkway.
And, Ms. Nottingham, this will be just like Shreveport-Barkstel Bridge. We will take care of portion, Shreveport will take care of a portion.
Correct, for the lighting.
Okay. And, Ben, did you get a chance to look at it?
Yes, sir. Probably the most unique part of this is that generally speaking, when the state is doing improvements to a highway within the city of Bossier City, we are paying for the sidewalks and the lighting. And in these agreements, it specifically states that the DOTD is covering the cost of all of those. So, much like previous agreements, probably the latest one was the interchange into the base where we put lighting out there and we have to go into an intergovernmental agreement with DOTD for the maintenance of that. It's the same thing here, this is really just a formality.
Okay, thanks.
Ben, did you talk to anybody again on the lights right there on the interstate this out? There's still a bunch of them out. And we talked about several months ago.
We have, we currently, I'll poke, we don't have a lot of control over the I-20 corridor right through there with James Construction out there doing a lot of that work. But, I'll get involved with that. All of the lighting is intended to be redone along that alignment. So, once it's complete, some of that's been de-energized for construction purposes and some of the subsurface work that they're doing, but I will poke, poke again.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Ben, hold on before you go. Have we, have we recouped all of our money that the state is supposed to be reimbursing us on, on the?
No.
No?
For Coleman?
Yes.
No.
How lo, how long has that been now?
We poke them every month. It's been two years.
Two years?
At least.
So, what, who did we need to get in touch with to get our money back? Do we need to call Senator Bass?
That might work.
I mean, I'm happy to do that, I mean, but two years, that's our money.
Agreed.
And there was a contractual obligation that they're failing to, to, what's the legal term? Whatever, you know, they're failing to bring, you know, keep their end of the bargain up, you know?
Failing to fulfill their, their end of the obligation.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad you're back, Charles. So, you know, really, that, I'm glad Brian brought it up. I mean, we need to take action.
It's on our, it's, it's, it's on my radar and we talk about it monthly.
Right, honestly, how, what kind of interest do we earn? Two or three percent, you know? Anyway, I know it's disintegrated at you, but we certainly.
Oh, it's frustrating to me too.
Uh, need to take action.
What's been communicated to us, Councilman Montgomery, is that, I don't understand how it works, but they have a long auditing process where all of this stuff goes through.
I don't know of anything that takes two years to audit, other than th, uh, stealing. That normally, since it's a criminal activity, it takes two years, but not, not something of this nature. An audit's normally done in 12-minute intervals, am I correct, Ms. Williamson?
I don't know how they operate, but I know it took us two years to change the name of their signs on, on I-20 from Central Lake to Brookshire Grocery Arena, and that was a, you know, and we had to pay for it and we had to produce a cooperative endeavor.
Mayor, do you agree? Thank you.
What, I didn't mean to open this can of worms, but kind of did. Mr. Rashbak, what about the lighting on I-20 that we have fixed for the state that we're supposed to be getting some reimbursement on that also?
Well, the lighting, to be clear, the work that we do on I-20, that's the city's responsibility when it comes to maintenance. So, the work that we had done with I-20 prior to the construction of what they're doing right now, that, that is on the city to maintain that. So, what we are trying to protect is any damage that's occurring to that lighting as a result of construction, that the city is not bearing the cost related to those expenses, so.
All the beating and jarring up there they're doing, you know, some public damages in life.
And digging, I mean, they've done, there's quite a bit of subsurface drainage going in. You can kind of see it now, if you go to, like, the I-20 on and off ramps at Old Mendon Road, you can see some of the new drain pipes. Well, you got lighting coming off of all of those ramps with underground electrical on and on. It's complicated, but that's our biggest, we, and we have been communicating routinely. We, we inspect the lighting there and have been communicating routinely with DOTD that there are portions of the I-20 lighting that's off. So, it's.
Right there coming out of my neighborhood, it's, you come out there later and I just saw it.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
Well, I, I agree that, I, I mean, I think we need to get with Senator Bass, Representative Bamberg, Senator Seeball, all of them. And, you know, they need to do whatever they need to do to get us our money.
Yeah, I mean, we agree.
Okay.
Were there any other projects of that nature where we were, had to put up money? There was Coleman in.
That's, that's the one that I, that's the only one I can recall. And Coleman was a, anyway, it was part of a bigger right-size street program.
We swapped.
Yeah.
Remember, we, well, we actually took in Barkstel Boulevard at the East Bank and they quote, "Give you credit so you can go build another road."
And then they made us, anyway. Not to rehash the soap opera, but yeah.
We could've took the shaft on that one, David.
What?
Say, we could've took the shaft on that one.
Well, we're not going down without a fight, I can tell you that.
Amy, did you get the first or second on that one?
First and second, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Council, any more questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring and promotion of a labor and backfilling any positions this may create for Parks and Recreation. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Council, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring and promotion of a labor and backfilling any positions this may create for Parks and Recreation. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ben, is that what you did, the second? Council, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring and promotion of tech audio due to resignation and backfilling vacant positions this may create in the sales tech department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Council, any questions? Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for public utilities to amend resolution number 37 of 2024 to fill a maintenance mechanic for the Red River wastewater treatment plant in Beckfield. The vacant position this creates resulting to a net neutral change in 2024 wastewater fund operating budget. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second. Council, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for public works to fill a part-time kennel worker position in the animal control division and backfill any vacant position this may create.
So moved.
Second.
Council, any questions? Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to approve the use of city water to serve the park subdivision. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Council, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Rashbak, Ben, is this gonna put any strain on our, our system up north?
To give you some comparison, you know, even a huge, like, thousand rooftop subdivision would, would not really impact much of our ability to provide water.
Okay, I'm looking at, what's, 59 homes?
Yeah.
Okay. No future plans for any other units or?
The, the place where I'm seeing the most potential for development in, in the parish would be along Swan Lake, north of, kind of north of the city, up close to Dean Point, right in there. That's probably where you'll see somewhere on the order of 3,000 to 4,000 rooftops that, that have the potential to be built there. But that's really sort of the last, you know, real developable property for that kind of, of stuff. Most of what we're seeing is infill or expansion of existing subdivisions, things of that nature. We've got some decent developments on the books, but they're, you know, 100 homes, to give you some idea, you're talking 250 gallons a day per home. It's just not, not much.
All right, thank you.
Like to see us have more customers.
Yeah, no, I'm all for it.
Council, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote. Brian?
Ah, didn't pop up, I'm a yea.
You get that in?
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution declaring Friday, July the 5th, as an administrative down day for the city of Bossier. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Council, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of two traffic control lead technicians and two traffic control technicians in the traffic engineering division, first and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring or promotion of tax audit supervisor due to resignation and backfilling any vacant positions this may create in the sales tax department, first and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution declaring support for the greatest American cleanup, first and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the council? Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve joint appointment with the police jury to re, the real point Jeff Stephen as a representative for the M P C board, appointment effective upon approval, the term will expire on July the second, two thousand thirty.
So move.
Second.
Any questions, counsel?
I, I take it the police jury is all ready? Tomorrow?
Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote. Reports? No reports today? Wow. Alright, any announcements? Alright, meeting adjourned.